We're going to call the meeting in order. We may be a few seconds early, but it's close. This is the September 12th, 2022, meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Welcome to you folks that are attending. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on September 20th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms that are in the back, and I think also Jerry has them, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. Roakon, we're all here? Travis is our liaison member from the commissioners today. Good morning. Approval of minutes is the next or the first item on the agenda from the August 22nd, 2022, meeting. Is everyone that get a chance to review their packet and their minutes? Any recommendations, changes, clerical errors, anything like that? Hearing none, the chair would address a motion to approve them?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes of the August 22nd, 2022, minutes discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Again, have you had an opportunity to review the packet today for the consent as well as the regular agenda items?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved in second to approve the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Brittany, consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1322 for Dudley and Isla La Pointe to review a single wide mobile home in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1322 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1735 for Carolyn Hunt to review a single wide mobile home in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1735 with conditions. And finally, item five is conditional use permit review CU 2150 for Rodney and Trev Golds to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2150 with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Any pulling from the staff?
Nope.
The commission would prefer to remove any item, three, four, or five, from the consent agenda. Anyone in the audience want an item, one of those three items pulled? Based on that? How about clerical errors? Anybody got a clerical error in any of those? Very good. Based on that, I'd address a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as posted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number six.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion, if possible, that we discuss item six and item seven together, but vote on them separately.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second to address agenda item number six and number seven as related. In this case, it's from the same applicant and same roads. Discussion. Does take a two-thirds vote to approve that. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You announced, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, Cody Sac, environmental planner. Item six is proposed road name for Labrador Trail. The planning department received a road naming application to name an existing road, Labrador Trail. The applicant is coming home. Their new road will provide access to three existing lots. It is within a 40-foot wide access easement and is approximately 0.3 miles long, and again, it'll provide access to three lots. This was routed around for interdepartment review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. The road name was approved by emergency services, 911. So staff is recommending approval of proposed road name Labrador Trail with one condition. And then item seven is proposed road name Archer Way. It is to name an existing road located within a 6-6-foot wide access easement that is approximately 0.6-7 miles long and provides access to six lots. It is located off of Cabron Road. Again, this was routed around for interdepartment review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received, and the road name was approved by emergency services, 911. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed road of Archer Way with one condition.
Questions for Cody on item number six or number seven in regards to discussion? Based on that, I'm going to declare that the discussion motion is ended, and we are now looking at item number six first in for an action.
Move to approve item number six, which is Labrador Road, is that correct?
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, proposed road naming Labrador Trail. Anyone from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number seven, the same. We are done with our discussion, and the chair would address a motion for action.
Mr. Chair, I so move item seven, Archer Way. Do you pass that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to agree, per staff's recommendation, proposed road naming Archer Way. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eight.
Item number eight is conditional use permit CU 22-39. It is to allow an existing cabin to remain and be used as storage only on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is AMB Cabs, LLC, listen, Brian Boucher. Location of the property is 12727 North Prairie Creek Road. Involves 2.08 acres. Current zoning is rural residential district, and the existing land use is residential. Access is off North Prairie Creek Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. There are seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permits. I will read the answers aloud. For number one, no, the request you should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, as it still resembles a small residential structure in a residential neighborhood. Number two, no, the requested you should not have any long-term negative effects on the use of enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The structure conforms with the residential uses in the area. Number three, no, the requested you should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding properties in the area. Number four, all access utilities, yes, all access utilities are in place. Number five, yes, access is off North Prairie Creek Road via an existing approach. The request you should not significantly impact the traffic congestion. And number six, the property is zoned rural residential district, and approved CUP is required to use the existing cabin as storage, as there's already a primary structure on the property. And number seven, yes, the future land use is rural residential district. Allowing the CUP should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in 1975, and as well as a cabin built in 1975. There is an existing operating or existing septic system, and they are current on their operating permit. The request was routed around for interdepartment review. The highway department has no comments, and the county ordinance enforcement officer said there's a violation from 2018 for vacation home rental. Upon review of that conditional use permit for the vacation home rental, it was discovered that there is a second cabin on the property. Part of the conditions for that vacation home rental require this conditional use permit for this cabin to be converted to storage. On September 2nd, 2022, the staff performed a site visit. A small cabin is located on a subject property behind the existing single-family resident. The refrigerator and stuff has been unhucked and removed from the kitchen area, but it's still located inside the cabin. There's a ladder to the loft has been removed, and there is furniture being stored in the loft. Again, the subject property has an approved conditional use permit CU 22-18 that allows an existing single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental. This CUP will satisfy a condition of approval. Staff has received some questions from neighbors of the intended use. There's an attached email. I believe that the neighbor was satisfied with staff's response. So with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-39 with conditions.
Questions for Cody. Cody, I've got one, just move things along. Is there one septic or two septics? In other words, is, are each of the structures served by a septic? And I'll tell you where I'm going with this. If the septic, if there is a second septic per not living there, it should be properly removed under our ordinance.
From my understanding, there's, from my knowledge of it, there's only one septic on the property, and they expanded it in 2022. I'd have to look into that a little more to actually know if there's a second septic. But generally, what happens is these cabins, or when people do this, if there is plumbing in there, they'll just hook it to the existing septic system. So if they remove all the living quarters out there, and it's not removed, or it's not used for living, it'd bring the septic into compliance. Again, is that kind of what you're?
Yeah, follow-up would be that if that's the case, and we're going to say that they're not going to use this, if this should get used, and we don't have the enforcement personnel to go out yearly and check these things, then they're in violation of the septic. So I really would like to know whether there's a second septic. If it's, if it's there, then they still could move right back into using this. If it's not there, then they're in violation even on their septic.
Correct. And like I said, from my understanding, from what was researched for the property, there is only one septic on there. And the purpose of this conditional use permit was to be able to police the fact that this wouldn't be used for living quarters anymore. Someone can, someone can still technically have a bathroom in a garage or a shed, then it's hooked to the septic system.
But in this case, where we're doing a vacation home rental, then you're in violation of vacation rental, but you're also in violation of the septic if you go back to using it. This is a serious one where we're seeing they're not going to use it. If somebody changes or it changes hands, we have that going on in the county. People start using things differently when it changes hands. But anyway, that's the only point I would care to make on the matter. Anyone else want to question Cody?
Would you want to continue this until the next meeting and have Cody find out?
I'd sure like to know. Yes.
Motion?
Makes a lot of difference in this case.
I'd make a motion that we continue this on to the next meeting two weeks from now to, for the purpose of finding out if we have a septic tank, separate one for the A-frame.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved in second to continue to, what's the next meeting? We should put that date in there.
The September 26th.
Excuse me?
September 26th.
September 26th, is that all right to add that? Mike? Mike?
That's good. You bet.
Thank you. It's been moved in second to move this as a continuance to the September 26th meeting. I already forgot. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. If we could know that, it does make a difference to me, Cody. There's a lot of difference in what the violation is here and what we're doing when we're leaving the building. We're not asking them to tear that down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. On to item number nine.
Item number nine is conditional use permit CU 22-38. It is to allow accessory structures, a shop building and a loafing shed, prior to a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant landowner is Andrew Evans. Involves 20 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district and is currently vacant many structures. Access is off an unnamed section line right away to the east, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria for the planning commission may consider it in review of conditional use permits. The answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, no, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare under the public. Number two, no, the requested you should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Shops and loafing sheds are in accessory use in agriculture districts. Number three, no, the requested you should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, the propose, the purpose of the proposed structure is for agriculture use. Again, access will be off an unnamed section line to the east. Number five, yes, the requested you should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the proposed, the property is zoned agriculture district. A shop and loafing shed as a primary structure is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use is agriculture district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, currently, the property is vacant many structure, and there is no septic on the property. This was routed around for interdepartment review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. On September 8th, 2022, staff performed a site visit. They didn't find any violations or any, any issues. Again, the applicant is proposing to build a shop and loafing shed. The reason for the conditional use permit, if your ZODAG, tax DAG, you can have these accessory structures out in agriculture. He's not tax DAG, so it requires the conditional use permit. So staff, and staff has not received any complaints regarding the request. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-38 with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Cody, is there any restrictions as far as them putting a little bunkhouse inside in the end for spending time sleeping and all that sort of thing?
If they, if they did that, they'd have to put septic out there, and then they'd have to meet the requirements for living quarters.
They would have to do that.
It would turn into living quarters, and then at that point, the conditional use permit would actually go away because you'd have a primary structure on the property.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Additional questions for Cody? Anyone in the audience here to speak on this? Chair would address the motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, CU 22-38 with nine conditions. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to number 10.
Item 10 is minor planning and development amendment PU 22-11 is to amend the planning and development to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant is Kristen Bennett, Haven Homes LLC. The location of the property is 22611 Hazel Lane. Current zoning is planning and development district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Hazel Lane, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Upon review by staff, it appears that the property meets the definition of a bed and breakfast. The applicant stated that she serves breakfast to the guests, and the South Dakota State Lodging License lists the property as a bed and breakfast. So the request needs to be for a bed and breakfast, or the applicant needs to obtain a state lodging license or vacation home for a vacation home rental. The applicant actually came in and applied or paid for new advertising fees to re-advertise this as a bed and breakfast. So staff is recommending to continue planning and development amendment PU 22-11 to the October 11th, 2022, Planning Commission meeting to allow time, the applicant, time to advertise for the bed and breakfast or obtain a state lodging license for a vacation home rental.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody? Before we go on with this, is anybody in the audience here to speak on item number Please come up and introduce yourself and go ahead and state what you would like for the record, please.
My name is Byron Altman. I live at 13206 Lewis Drive, immediately south of the property I had joined. When, in 2019, I noticed that it looked like the property was being used as a rental, and then we had not been notified of any intention. I visited the planning office and told them they opened a case. I never heard anything more about it. The case was closed, apparently, because she said she wasn't going to be renting it. She has rented it continuously through this period. If you look at her feedback on her website, you'll see people talking about renting it. I learned of a renter when they knocked on my door because they'd lost their dog. How did you, you're staying over there? Oh, it's on the net. Okay, it's on the web. So she's advertising it, and she told you she wasn't doing that. She does not live in the property, nor is she adjacent to that property. She lives way across the meadow. It's not a B&amp;B, according to the rules for a B&amp;B. Vacation home rental. People, you know, should have some control over their property, but have you received notes from Steve and Michelle Hovland?
Yes, I was going to enter that into record since you bring that up. We received what we would call emails, Greg Rowland and Karen Roshi, and we received from Dave and Sue Reinhardt.
Right, okay. They more or less have stated their concerns. We don't feel she has a very good relationship with the truth, especially from what she's told you. There are rumors out there that she'd like to put a wedding chapel in there. This is a residential area. We're not in favor of a commercial outfit there. And when I built my house in 2007, I was told by the county that I could not put my septic in what is the, in the northwest corner of my property, because that's the Madison recharge. Well, at that time, a few years before that, the owner had put in a septic system that is right in her southeast corner or southwest corner of that property. So their septic system is in the Madison recharge. We're not in favor of Kristin Bennett because we do not trust her. What she says has nothing to, no relationship to what she does. And that's just one of those things where, okay, if you grant her this, she's going to come back and push and push and push again. And our neighbors, you've got the reports, are not in favor. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Altman?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you have any printouts of all that documentation of how much, you know, you said she's been operating this for X amount of time?
Were you not provided that? I mean, we do have a record, a paper copy. Dave and Sue Reinhardt had printed that off, and I have looked at it, and I think I can give you the website that we use that documents people feeding back from 2019 to today. And I have a few photographs, but I only took them in the last couple of months of rentals that are there.
And have you given it to the planning department as well?
I think that it was supplied. I can check and make sure that you get it.
I'd make sure all that documented, documented evidence is given to them so it's in the record, because if I didn't see it, you know, I get what you're saying, but then again, we don't have it to review.
Okay, well, we can get you that website if she still has it up.
Any other questions for Mr. Altman? Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. I just had one. This is probably the first time we've ever had that come up. We actually have a neighbor questioning the septic setup, so I guess I would want that included, some of your luck into that, if you would, Cody, when you review this matter for the continuation.
Yes, I'm sorry. Cody Sac, environmental planner, absolutely. Generally, when we continue stuff like this, we don't go into a full-depth staff report because it's just going to get continued to that next meeting anyways.
Correct.
On that October 11th meeting, it'll be a full staff report with all, everything that's on the property, size of septic, all information will be provided.
I just thought, especially with a neighbor being one of them that questioned on this, we want to make sure that we look into that.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions for Cody while we've got him up here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Cody, I guessing you kind of picked up on what I'm looking at there for that property. So anything you get on that, let me know, because if they've been operating it for two years, and they told you all no, I'd like to know who they told no to, and then if it's documented evidence that they have been operating.
Yeah, I'll talk to Dwayne, our ordinance enforcement officer, and get a little more background history on it and see if he has any information that wasn't provided to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Cody? Go ahead, Karen.
How likely, if the person doesn't live on site, how does it meet the bed and breakfast requirement?
So in our, in our bed and breakfast ordinance, it says that you either live on site or on the adjacent property. She told us in an email that she lives on the adjacent property, and she serves breakfast, and they have a state lodging license for a bed and breakfast. So with all that information provided to us by the applicant herself, we said it need to be a bed and breakfast. This is the first that I'm hearing about that she actually doesn't live adjacent to the property. So if she doesn't live adjacent to the property, this may be continued for the advertising for a vacation home, but in the next two, three weeks, or however long till that meeting, if it comes out that she can't be a bed and breakfast, then the vacation home rental section will be, be brought back.
Just to clarify that, what you're saying is that's why you limited or ceased your continued investigation through your ordinance person at that point, because it appeared to meet the criteria for bed and breakfast?
Correct, yes, based off of what she informed us, but if what she informed us is actually not actually accurate, the request for a vacation home rental will be back in front of you on October 11th. So on October 11th, it'll either be a vacation home rental that we're, we're discussing or a bed and breakfast, depending on what's found out in the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair, some clarification. Is it currently being, so it's currently being operated as Airbnb? Is there people renting it right now?
She is currently renting it, yes, I believe.
And if she doesn't meet the criteria of the Airbnb, are we going to give a cease and desist order, or is that out to us, is that to the state?
That would be up to our, our state's attorney and our ordinance enforcement officer. I believe that that's what would, the course of action that would be going forward.
And I see Megan coming up here. I'm just asking the question, what, what to expect?
Yeah, Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. So typically, I don't send out nasty grams if people are trying to come into compliance. Now, if this commission decides that they do not want to grant the permit, then I would send out the letters, and we would go from there. So obviously, our first hope is that people come into compliance, but if this commission decides that they don't want to grant a permit, then that basically is when I get involved.
Thank you, Megan. I would express one thing for the commission. If you would indicate during your review process with the applicants that the commission has a number of questions in regards to this matter going on.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
That way, the attendance might be important to the commission for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that we express that, that the commission appears to have a number of questions.
Yes, I'll absolutely inform her of that. My guess is she didn't show up today because she knew that it was going to get continued. I informed her it was going to get continued, so I, we don't tell people not to show up. People can show up and talk, and I told her that, but I'm guessing that she's just figured it was going to get continued anyways.
Thank you, Cody. Any other questions for Cody? Hearing none, how about, excuse me, a motion?
I move that we continue this item to September 26th meeting, or no, October 11th meeting, as recommended by staff.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second, per staff's recommendation to continue minor planned unit development amendment PU 22-11 to the October 11th, 22. dash one one to the October eleventh, twenty-two, planning commission meeting discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eleven.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number eleven is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment twenty-two dash twelve. It is to amend an existing planned unit development to specify size and location of accessory structures on the subject property. Applicant and landowner is Rapid City Mobile Home Park LLC. The agent is Janine Maskovich. Site location is four eight three five Sturgis Road and is currently zoned Planned Unit Development District. It is the location of Simbrough Island Mobile Home Park. Access is off Sturgis Road and there is one hundred year special flood hazard area on the property. This PU D was last reviewed and approved by the Board of Commissioners on July sixth of last year. Staff did go through and validate that all those conditions of approval have been met. All the buildings and onsite wastewater treatment systems have been permitted through the planning department. Request was sent out for an air departmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to allow storage sheds and lean-to additions as accessory structures and to establish required setbacks for sheds within the planned unit development. Per their proposal, storage sheds will be limited to twelve feet by twenty feet and will be required to make four-foot separations from other structures and utility posts. The lean-tos that they're requesting will be permitted and will be constructed to match the home, be subject to property or community standards, and be subject to setback requirements of a mobile home. With that, staff has required, sorry, staff has modified condition number four and added conditions five, six, and seven to address the applicant's request. Condition number nineteen has been completed and there are no addressing concerns at this point, so it was removed. And with that, staff recommends, finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And I do have some photos that the applicant had sent in, so this is what the proposed lean-tos will look like. There was some question as to whether they were for cars or actually additions to the homes. And that's not for this one. So they do want these to match the existing mobile home, so they don't look out of place or anything like that, keeping up with the appearance of the mobile home park.
Questions for Jason?
No building permits are needed on these, is that correct, because they're not permanent?
If they're attached to the structure, they will need a building permit, and the sheds, if they are the twelve by twenty, if they exceed one hundred and forty-four square feet, will need a building permit.
Even though there's, like on a skid or something?
Yeah, they'll still need a building permit.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jason? Go ahead, Karen.
How big are the lots to have room for a ten by twenty shed?
Well, that's up to them and their site plan, however they have lots laid out. As long as they meet their twenty-foot setbacks between mobile homes is what we're concerned with, with the building permits.
The only question I had was if they get a shed that's less than one hundred and forty-four square feet, who determines the proper setbacks, the four-foot clearance for everything and proper property line setbacks or lot, lot size?
Up to the mobile home park manager at that point, because they don't need a building permit through our office.
I have one more comment.
Go right ahead.
I guess I'm concerned that we have four-foot setbacks. If there's a fire, it's gonna go right down the line.
Okay, I'm gonna throw in a positive. I'm sure that's a big file you're looking at, Jason. I've been kind of familiar with that piece of property for years, and it looks to me like after all these years, these folks are trying to get it in there, conforming to more with what we do in Pennington County.
I believe ownership has changed in the past couple of years.
That's what I was gonna say, this new ownership seems to be sensitive to some of our concerns.
Right.
In the past. Just wanted to note that I, I think it's, right now, it's a good deal, and I think they will handle it right. It appears they're, they're trying to do a lot of squeezing up of that area.
Right.
So just wanted to comment positive for the applicant in this case.
Right, back to Commissioner McGregor's point with the four feet, I believe that was calculated because they wanted the twelve feet for the accessory structure in width, and the four feet setbacks on each side, will it allow that twenty-foot distance in between mobile homes? I think that's how they came up with that.
Additional questions for Jason? Anyone in the audience here to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am, you'll have to come up and introduce yourself, just for the record, and go ahead and speak what you would like to say.
Hi, I'm Hebrew Korean. I live at five seven one six Key Lane, which is the opposite side of where that build is.
Sure.
We have concerns on whether or not they're going to be putting buildings up there, whether or not that will trap our leach field. That flood area goes right through our backyard, and then the other side of that is where I do believe.
We can get Jason to bring up the picture, can't we? Can we, can we in this case, so we have an idea what he's?
Are you looking for an aerial photo?
Yes.
Of the property? Give me one second.
Thank you, Jason.
So any development within the special flood hazard area would require a permit through our office? They wouldn't be able to put those structures in there, and they definitely wouldn't be able to put those on a leach field.
Well, and we're just concerned, we're still trying to find out for sure where our leach field is.
Sure. Just give them a moment here, and we should be able to get somewhat of a view.
And you're over here, ma'am?
Correct.
Okay.
We're a little right there, that.
Somewhere here?
Yep, and to the back lot.
You're here?
Yep, those two areas is where we live, so then I'm to understand that that's the field in which?
Here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So we have that, of course, the flood zones right, my understanding, like right where the dark green?
Right.
Right? And that's our, our backyard. We do believe that our leach field goes somewhere down that way. We are not a hundred percent on that. We are trying to find that out currently. We just wanted to make sure that there wouldn't be any backup or anything that would cause that not to threaten.
Yeah, so.
Excuse me.
This is the special flood hazard area here.
We just about can't hear, you're gonna have to bring the mic down a little lower. Go right ahead, because we wanna be sure, you're, you're talking about leach field and some drainage?
Right, and, and just the simple flood area, because the water flows right through that area. We don't want anything blocking that, where it's gonna stop the floodwaters and backup to, we have the two homes on the back side, too.
Okay.
We just kind of had a few questions on that, and what is it exactly?
So like I mentioned, if they do propose to put any kind of structures within this special flood hazard area, they would need a permit through our office to do so. They would have to be anchored and tied down, secured, so they wouldn't be, and if they do put anything in there, they need to make sure it doesn't affect this, negatively affect this special flood hazard area by raising the, the base flood elevation more than a foot.
Okay.
So it is definitely something that we look at.
Perfect. And is there a way that we can figure out where our leach field is for sure, just?
You would wanna talk to the city, you're within the city's one-mile jurisdiction for onsite wastewater, so I would start there.
Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, I have a question. Is the house that used to be the applicant's son operated his repossession business and a used car lot out, is that still part of this property now, or has that been? I know, I think both of them are deceased now. I think his dad passed away, and I think he passed away.
I'm not familiar with another business being operated.
Yeah, it used to be part of that one. It's in the corner up in the front, little yellow, small frame house.
Yeah, I don't believe that's still in operation. I'm not familiar with it.
No, I think it's closed up. I just wondered whether it was still part of the property. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jason?
So these mobile homes that we're looking at are in the hundred-year floodplain right now?
These ones that are within this blue hatching, yes. They are permitted.
Now, will we allow lean-tos on those and storage sheds and that sort of thing?
With the correct permitting.
What is it under the old legal nonconforming, because they were prior to our zoning ordinance?
I'd have to go through and look at each one, just to see when they were placed and what permits were drawn on each one of them.
Yeah, over the years, a lot of mobile homes and manufactured homes have been moved in and out of that, but I think it was probably prior to even nineteen seventy-five that that was there.
Right.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Just a question on leach fields. Is there just one leach field, or are there a couple?
There, I believe there are multiple on this property.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Does the commission need to discuss, there seemed to be some concern in regards to the twenty-foot or the safety setback in relationship to these structures, I guess. We probably should discuss that, if, if that's a bone of contention we're, we're concerned about that. Because it is nice to see the twenty-foot. We're looking at a lot of them that were put in at ten feet that, that we've always considered pretty dangerous. This one is twenty. Anyone else in the audience here to speak on this matter? I don't have any speaker before. Okay. Chair will address the motion.
Mr. Chair, I have, I guess, a concern at this point. If, if you're gonna have storage buildings on skids and things like that in a floodplain, I mean, somehow I'm missing something here.
Go ahead, Jason, I think Jason's got the answer.
Like I mentioned, they would need a floodplain development permit to put any structures in the floodplain, and if they put one of these twelve by twenty sheds in there, they would have to have specific anchoring to prevent flotation in that special flood hazard area.
A smaller one, a smaller one under that side, like a small Murphy shed or something?
They would still need a floodplain development permit, whether they got a building permit for it or not.
But would that be that it would have to be bolted down, have to be fastened down? I mean, somehow so it can't float away?
Exactly. So either anchoring straps over the top or, or some other technique that they have out there.
Okay.
I guess I've got a, is your applicant aware of that in your discussions?
It's a condition of approval in the planned unit development already, that any disturbance in the floodplain requires a permit through our office.
Okay.
Would that application come from the, the renter, the person renting the lot, or would it come from the property owner?
It could come from the person proposing to put the structure on there, but we would still require the property owner's signature and acknowledgement that it is being placed.
Okay.
And I guess I wanted to point out, I have driven through there and looked at it because a number of things have come up. It appears the new owner, and that's why I've commented, is trying to make it, or clean it up and straighten it up and make it a little more orderly. And I'm sure this is part of their program, they've gotta be able to give some storage to the tenants that are there or allow them storage, and it hasn't been part of the past. And that's about all I can say on that. It appears they're, they're trying, if you look at their roads and the cleanup and the weeds, and, I mean, that's greatly improved over ten years ago.
And that is part of the reason that we're recommending approval.
Okay.
Right.
Chair will address the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, and just for the record, am I getting it right? Minor planned unit development amendment PU twenty-two dash twelve with twenty-three conditions. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And just for the record here, I could wait until we get all our items done. Item is number, I think, six and seven. Kevin did notify, we only had a six vote, one person abstaining from that vote. On each, the road naming ones on six and seven, I wanted to make sure the record was clear on that. We only had a six vote. We had one commissioner abstaining from each item, six and seven.
Oh, okay. Who abstained, because I didn't hear?
Kevin.
Which Kevin?
Sorry. Well, one of the two of them.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, Gary. I wanted to correct that for the record. Thank you for allowing me to do that. On to item number twelve.
Agenda item number twelve is ordinance amendment twenty-two dash zero eight, and it is to amend ordinance number seven thirty-five to address contractor licensing procedures and update the reference to codes. So the reason that this is being amended is Brittany and I met with the city about our current seven thirty-five and how we would allow reciprocity with the city's licenses in the county and wouldn't require a separate license through the county. They weren't comfortable with that, and they decided that they didn't want to allow that. So we amended our ordinance, and if you don't mind, I'll just go through this. It's a short, it's a short ordinance amendment, so some other feedback we got from them that our, our references for the codes weren't exactly right, so we came through and modified those, and you can see those on the screen in red. Kind of minor, just changing it from ICC Electrical to National Electric. A lot of this is kind of the same. Been through, and if you have any questions, just feel free to stop me as I go through.
I, I do have one. The ICC that you had was, is an IVC derivative, I think, and now you've got National Electric. Why are you changing? Is that a state thing that's changed?
Yeah, it's actually, it's one of the codes that the state adopted, so that's why we changed that over.
Okay, so we're doing that to follow there?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Then as far as the contractor licensing goes, we did change these paragraphs here. The biggest, the biggest ones here are highlighted in red, so in lieu of using the city's license solely for reciprocity in the county, if they do have to come through our office to get a license, Class A and Class B, they can go to the ICC website, and they can actually schedule a non-authorized test, meaning that we don't have any jurisdiction, we don't have any inputs into what the test contains, so it's just a strictly ICC test. Their other option is that if they do have that current contractor license with the city, we can honor their test results there through the city, and we can apply that to their county contractor license.
One question, the next paragraph, naming Pennington County as certificate holder, why?
That's if anything goes wrong, then we're able to collect on that insurance to make whatever issue right with the homeowner. It's kind of standard for any insurance, for any contractor, like in the city, they have the certificate holder is Rapid City, in case it ever comes to that.
So when they update their insurance yearly or whatever it is, we'll get a copy of it, so we know that?
We get it at the time that they apply for their contractor license through the county. Yeah.
Jason, just for continuity, in the past, the commission has preferred to have the changes noted to them, not read the entire ordinance again. I assume that we wanna proceed in the same, have Jason note the changes that he is recommending in the approval of this ordinance amendment. If you would proceed, and, and based on that, there's no need to go through the entire item by item, other than those that note changes.
This was pretty much the last thing I needed to show you, so.
All right.
Then I do have one more. On page eight, it's got homeowner may not act as general building contractor. Excuse me, under this provision, if, if a homeowner is well enough to do and he decides to hire subcontractors, is he considered a general?
Not at that point. So we did have applicants that were coming in more or less skirting our system as it was written before, saying that they were gonna be the general contractor for their home build, meaning the intent behind that was that they do the construction and they do the building themselves, not come in and pull the permit and hire a contractor and come in and do all the work.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that wasn't the intent. We're, we're trying to protect the property owners from fly-by-nighter type contractors, and that kind of screwed the system in our eyes, so that's why that statement is.
By the same token, I think that the, the general public, if they're, know what's going on, they should have the right to, to proceed with hiring some people, too. I guess that would be my thought, so.
Yep.
Okay.
I had a question on the same thing. I, I think that needs to be a little more clear. I had a question on the same thing. I, I think that needs to be a little more clear because most homeowners are going to hire the, the normal professional trades, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC, without a doubt, to do, uh, their installation rather than take the state tests to qualify under your, uh, electrical and plumbing guidelines, for instance.
So you're saying if they apply as the general contractor, that they're assuming all the liability for the home that they build?
Yeah, basically, that's what they end up doing. You, they, and they allow the same thing in the city. I mean.
The, the only concern I have about that is if they sell the house afterwards and it's not built to any standard, and there are issues after that.
But the reason they became the general contractor is because they hired people for the lot, the ones that are truly certifiable.
But, but they're not contractors through, if they're not licensed through the county, then we don't know that they have that knowledge.
All there's, I'm, I'm suggesting that they do know, uh, they're hiring, uh, electrical, they're hiring a plumbing, they're hiring an HVAC that is licensed. That does make, I mean, they're going to supervise them, they're going to, uh, hold them, um, responsible for payment. How do you do that?
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. So the issue that we were seeing is we had homeowners that were coming in saying, I'm the general contractor, and then they would just hire a general contractor that wasn't licensed with us. And that's why this was added in.
I can see why they would do that. Can I explain, Megan, why they would do that? Because usually when you're on a job site, if you, if you're not familiar with the trades and how they operate on a job site, normally, in the case where there is no general contractor, you know who's supervising everybody? The carpenter. Because a lot of the carpenters can do the electrical and the plumbing when you get out of the city. They are qualified under the state. And what, that's where you've got a homeowner that then assumes, in other words, his car, carpenter becomes his in de facto supervisor. And as long as he hires the carpentry and the other, uh, certified trades, I don't have any problem with them. Why, who, who cares about the word general contractor?
Well, I guess the issue is it completely defeats the purpose of our ordinance. If you allow property owners just to hire a fly-by-night contractor who doesn't have to be licensed with us, it completely defeats the purpose of the ordinance, which is to make sure that our contractors that are working within the county know what they're doing.
It doesn't say anything about hiring a fly-by-night in there, Megan. It says a homeowner may not act as a general building contractor under this provision, but the, the page before, it basically says he can and be.
If I am understanding this correctly, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, it sounds like if a homeowner is trying to build their own house, they can do the majority of the work, but they can still hire a professional contractor that is an electrician or plumber without being a general contractor.
Correct.
To be a general contractor, you're hiring these sub-trades as your employees. Therefore, you need to be a general contractor.
Correct.
As, as a homeowner, as, as that homeowner situation. So I think that what this is stating is that you can't be a general contractor and hire some guy that says he's an electrician just to get around hiring a professional electrician. And so the homeowner can hire an electrical company, but they're hiring a contractor, an electrical contractor or a plumbing contractor.
Because what we were seeing is people were coming in saying, I'm going to do this myself, and they weren't.
They were just hiring a general contractor. They were paying Uncle Joe or somebody to do the plumbing.
Correct.
Specifically, what we saw is the applicant or the contractor would come in for a light, uh, building permit. Uh, we were telling him he's not licensed in the county for work, and he didn't want to go through the process. So then he would send the property owner in to get the permit, and he said that he was building it himself.
Even though we knew that they weren't, because the contractor already came in and said that they were building it. And so it thereby defeated the whole purpose of the ordinance.
Can I suggest that that wording in reality doesn't fit the situation? In other words, I would, I would look at it greater depth than a homeowner may not act as a general building contractor under this provision because in a way, when they hire a licensed carpenter, they hire all the licensed, the homeowner is, ends up doing the general part of it. Somebody still has to pay, somebody still has to go get the permits, make sure there's a permit hanging on the property. Uh, somebody has to see that the, their license and that they're insured, that sort of thing. I mean, so somebody's acting as that, whether it's the homeowner or the homeowner's carpenter, somebody's doing it.
Right.
In actuality. I'm saying that not necessarily in the wording of our ordinance. It doesn't fit the reality.
If, uh, if the wording doesn't work for you.
Yeah.
But I would like to get this through, uh, to the board for a final approval because we've been operating
Right.
more or less under this, um, since we found out from the city that they didn't want to honor reciprocity.
I'm sure they go through the same thing. If you could research that after we get this through, Jason, to find out how they do it. They allow homeowners to, as long as they hire all the licensed trades. They allow them not to be a general. They don't even call them as a general. It's just called owner or supervisor, I think, or something under the city. I'm familiar with a number of people that did their own, but they hired all licensed trades, including carpenter. So they know they can be, because then they send out their inspector, and those inspections are, are, uh, part of the record too. And it shows who the installation was.
If they're listed on the building permit application. A lot of times, like the situation I just described, uh, that applicant, the homeowner came back in and specifically omitted that contractor from the license.
I don't know what you're going to do about that. I don't know.
His intent was to get the building permit and then still have the unlicensed contractor do the work. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
We beat him up enough. Chair, address a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, I make motion that, uh, we pass Agenda twelve, uh, the modification of Pennington County Building Code and Construction Ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second to, uh, per staff's recommendation, amend ordinance, uh, OA twenty-two dash eight, Pennington County Building Code and Construction Ordinance. And I guess we'd have to put per staff's recommendations. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify the saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Jason, I would look into that though, because I mean, they're doing it. And, and it is tough to catch them. I know it is, but you can't take everything away from the poor homeowner. Thank you.
Good morning. Item number thirteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash forty to allow a fire station in an agriculture district. The applicant is the scenic volunteer fire department, and Jerome Harvey, the Pennington County Fire Administration is in the audience if you have questions. Uh, the agent is Charles Maud. It's located at the intersection of East Highway forty-four and Bear Creek Road. Uh, the lot size is five point seven eight acres, and, um, there is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. When considering conditional use permits, um, staff considers seven criteria. I will just read the findings. No, allowing this conditional use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. No, the requested use should not have any negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood. No, allowing this CUP should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Yes, the property is currently vacant of any utilities. Access to the structure will be off of Bear Creek Road, which is an approved section line road within the scenic township. Yes, ingress access will be provided via a proposed approach off of Bear Creek Road. There is adequate area for parking on the property. Yes, the property's own agriculture district, the requested use may be allowed with an approved CUP. And yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture. Allowing this conditional use is consistent with the current comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. Uh, the property is vacant of any structures. Uh, this was rather run for the interdepartmental review. No concerns or objections were received. They did receive the approach permit from county highway. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a fire station on this property. The applicant has estimated a lot size variance to allow a lot smaller than ten acres in an agriculture district. Variance VA twenty-two dash nineteen will be heard by the Board of Adjustment on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Parking and access appear to be adequate for the requested use. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two forty with conditions.
Questions for Brittany?
Britt, uh, number seven on recommendations, you talk about vehicles can't be stored, maintained, blah, blah, blah. And then you say non-fire related overnight stays. Now you're talking people staying overnight?
Yes.
Okay. Going from vehicles to people. That's what I wondered. Very good.
Do you want to change that, Mike?
No, I, I, probably nobody else has that question, but I was just curious. It's, you know, you start off with one and you go back to the other.
I guess I, when I read it, I thought it was because the person's vehicle is going to end up staying too.
That was my first thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
You and I must be on the old geezer list now. Anything else for Brittany? Does the commission have any questions or the applicants? They are here. If they don't, the chair to address a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash forty, per staff's recommendation with ten conditions. Discussion. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Onto item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen is an amendment to the Pennington County TIF number five for the Liberty Plaza. On December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, the Pennington County Commissioners adopted TIF Plan number five. This was at the request from the City of Box Elder for the development and promotion of what is referred to as Liberty Plaza. Liberty Plaza is located within the, the city of Box Elder, and due to constitutional debt constraints, the City of Box Elder requested Pennington County to be the conduit for the TIF. The original project cost of ten million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars was approved.
Brittany, just for efficiency, um, how much of this, we got to review it. And, and my question there was, I wasn't sure when I read this, and I think I talked to one other commissioner felt the same. What we're reviewing, it looked like it was in, within code.
It is within code, and it's about three point six million. So the agent is in the audience. If you have specific questions to it, um, he can speak more.
Are we, what I'm saying is, are we reviewing the results or are we, uh, doing an additional vote that's required? That was where I was headed.
It's an additional vote that's required because it's an amendment to the original amount.
Okay. Even though it was within the code, you, you still clarify it by putting it part of the record.
Correct. It was the direction of our state's attorney's office to bring it back in front of the planning commission as an amendment.
I just was trying for efficiency. I don't want to see you go through any more than you have to in regards. I think most of the information is submitted. Go ahead.
And that was all, that it was just the proposed increases less than the thirty-five percent approved in the original project plan, and redetermining the tax increment base is not necessary. And so it's about three point six million. So, and it's due to increase construction costs.
Okay. Questions for Brittany?
What are the consequences of us not, uh, motion to approve this?
I'll defer that to Tobin Morris.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, Toby Morris with Collier Securities. Uh, it is really based on inflation, and I think if you look at the numbers, the last TIF I was before you, I know one of the question, I think it was, was it you, Commissioner Lewis, regarding the financing, the interest? You'll see this has been allocated more to hard costs and the finance, or the interest cost has been reduced. So this is truly a hard cost reallocation, uh, on that. What are the consequences of not going through? It will definitely have implications in terms of what's being built out there, just with, uh, like I said, the, the rising costs. One of the in particular might be the housing portion that's coming in next to keep it within the affordable. The affordable per Mr. Shafie is saying that two seventy-five to three and a quarter. Uh, I know that seems high to say is affordable, but that truly is what our costs are looking at today.
The other half of that question is, um, this is based on current day costing, and this is a long-term project. And in two years, what happens when, uh, a recessionary period hits and this reduces, um, that some of those costs might go down? So, um, are we approving three point six million dollar additional fees for something that may be reduced in a couple of years due to supply chain coming back or other, other circumstances that may lower labor costs or?
Good, good question. I would point to two line items on that, I think, that are for the public good. One of it was with discussions of the City of Box Elder as they're growing so quickly that they're looking at a nonprofit center. So part of the cost allocation in here was for land that will be donated back to the city for what I'm going to call the nonprofit government building, and that is estimated at about one point two million. Even if the developer has incurred ten million of costs, by reducing that interest expense and taking what they've already incurred today, they're going to greatly exceed that thirteen million that's in there at this point in time. Could they come back? Let's say inflation keeps going up. No, we're only allowed under qualified law to do this once. So I, I would say if the recession does hit, the way that they're going and building out right now, the plan still called for all that infrastructure. Uh, a lot of the costs, um, have been incurred in terms of, of the, the grading, the mobilization. There was a, a lot of issue with the dirt work that they weren't, uh, expecting, the over excavation.
And those were all determined by soils engineers?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Thank you.
I have a question, sir. Uh, I assume with the B twenty-one and all that that's going on, there's federal funds in here.
There were state funds to offset the Liberty Plaza itself, the, the, the large building. And I might have to, uh, refer to Commissioner Lassiter. I know he's very close and near to this. But as far as the federal funds, um, not that I'm aware of on this particular project, if you mean like from ARPA or so forth, they did not receive any of those grant funds, no.
What I was curious, if there were some, if those would be escalating possibly too, to help offset some of the inflation. But if there's no federal funds, that there would be no offsets.
Typically, if there's federal funds, it's the most expensive grant money you'll ever receive.
Yeah, okay.
Toby, I just have one.
Yeah.
Um, your materials and your ordering, uh, procedures, I assume that they're greatly extended too. In other words, you probably have to make commitments, uh, much earlier in the sup, normal supply chain than you have before COVID and the, the inflation that's going on.
Oh, yeah. It's, you're constantly behind the eight ball right now with everything on materials. Steel is now, I think, within six to eight months, where last year it was twelve to sixteen months. So good point, Commissioner.
Okay. I, I personally thought your, your, uh, original one was very aggressive anyway in the situation we were moving into. So I, I guess, and I voted for it, but I expected to see a considerable increase. I'm surprised thirty-four nine. I'm sure the developer is absorbing some of that out of his own pocketbook.
Very much so. And it will be a successful project. You can see from, you know, some of the land that has been sold. Uh, you have great rep, develop, developers from the Lloyds that have been going in, so it's, it's coming along as planned. It's exciting.
Well, if I remember, when you had this approved, I'm going to say she, the buy was in the thirty-four dollar range, and there's a sheet supply where there are a hundred dollars that were in the thirty-dollar range.
Exactly.
At that time. That's quite a difference.
That's huge. I think diesel was around three bucks a gallon then too.
Yeah, or less.
Or less.
Any other questions for Toby while we've got him? Kevin?
Your infrastructure for water, Box Elder has always been, had a problem with water getting into that infrastructure. How was that being dealt with over, with all of the number of homes and the number of apartments? Um, have they got that taken care of?
I, I don't know if you could say taken care of. It's been addressed quite a bit. There's been several applications into DNR for, uh, water, wastewater, from the use of the ARPA money that the city received. They have pledged that to get the grant money from the state as well. So I would say total, you're looking at anywhere from sixteen to twenty. from the state as well. So I would say total, you're looking at anywhere from 16 to 20 million worth of water sewer storm projects that'll be going on in the city within the next, I would say, two to four years. So, yeah, they are, they're very aware of it. I know they're looking at another well. They're in discussions with Sedita on that potential pipeline, um, that may come from the west. So, yeah, they're, they're definitely exploring all options and addressing it.
Another question. Um, so I can see where this economic development greatly benefits, um, Box Elder, Rapid City, some of those other things. Um, what I'm not seeing is a huge benefit to the county coffers. So, um, that's kind of, I, I, I see, you know, a lot of economic growth and, and stuff where sales tax money and that kind of stuff goes to the cities. Um, Pennington County operates on property tax. And if we're given incremental adjustments to property taxes, then the county is reducing their income and not getting any of that back through economic development per se, unless it's residential homes that are paying property taxes on that. So, um, if, if you could explain some of that to me, I'd appreciate it is, to how is the county itself actually benefiting versus some of the other, um, surrounding area cities and that kind of stuff?
You know, about a month ago, I testified to the special study session this summer about county budgets in particular. And I've, I have told them, I said, hey, you're walking in a drizzle not knowing you're getting soaked. And that's what happened because it goes back to the 1998 property tax freeze. Every year, I've also lobbied for the potential of sales tax for counties because you're so limited to what you can do. And then you bring a TIF along and I look at TIF as it's planting a tree to get the shade for tomorrow. Yes, it is a delayed benefit of what is gonna happen, but I think you've got a much larger issue globally from what you pointed out because you can only put so much on the burden of a property tax owner. And especially a, a large owner that may derive their income from a ranch or farm. Um, I, we're a very conservative state and it's, it is truly penalizing counties. And in fact, I know probably two counties that face the risk of going bankrupt because of their jail. And that's what I explained to them as well at that special session. And those costs aren't going away. I know you guys are looking at a large jail addition on as well. Um, I don't, I guess I don't have the answer. I control all the problems and I control them technically. And you know, is the answer through growth? Yeah, the way county budgets work, because you can only go CPI plus growth. And there's years that you didn't even get CPI. And so then you go back even further because it's compounding negatively. So I, I don't know, Commissioner, that's a, that's a great question that the, the folks in peer really need to address sooner rather than later.
Yeah, because it's not just Pennington County, but all the counties statewide
Oh, yeah.
are limited in their income streams. And they are the customer service for everybody living within that county. So how can they continue to provide the justice and the safety and all of the recommendations that, you know, we provide as a county to the constituents without having the funds to actually operate and do that? So that's part of my concern.
As I said to the summer study, uh, the other month, I said, imagine this, you know, you get a call 911 states your emergency, will this be MasterCard or Visa? How would you like to pay for the sheriff to arrive at your doorstep? You know, that's about the point we're gonna have to get to. And no, we don't take American Express.
Mr. Chair, if I can chime in?
Just go ahead.
Thanks for letting us know that you were out there at the meeting. Um, it, it's one of the things I've pushed and you've heard me talk about it a lot. I, I, I have pushed for county sales tax. And I think, I think it's wise because of how TIFs or whether you use, uh, what's that formula that you can use for like 20, 40, 60, 80?
Discretionary.
Discretionary formula. There's so many different things that does take that revenue away from the county if you utilize them. And a TIF is one of them. Long-term, 15 years, 20 years, depending on how, how soon they pay that debt off, then it does come to the county and then there's your growth. And so what he was saying is planting a tree for shade tomorrow. Yeah, that's really what it is. The problem is, is we're 20 years down the road and then our budget, our commission has changed and all of that. And that's why I have, I have a problem with it. And that's why I've, in some cases, I'll, I'll approve them, but also say we need something else because it's, this is not going to address what we have going on today, tomorrow, in the three or four days until the tree gets big enough. So, um, it's a constant battle. And I think the more we all get involved with even the state and the, um, what is it? Is it the land? What, what is that committee? Is it, is it the, the property tax committee that's the summer study you want?
Yep, yep, we're looking at that too.
Pay attention to that in peer and get, and listen to it and, and give your input because that's something that they need to hear because they're listening, they're, they're hearing everything that's going on and they're trying to address several different things, but also understanding that the counties are so limited that, you know, it's, it's impacting us and it's impacting many of us pretty, pretty heftily. So.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, because it's 110 here now and in 20 years, we'll all be shriveled and gone. Before our shade hits, you know?
You know, and it doesn't just impact, um, counties. We had one recently that, the, the big one out in Rapid Valley that impact, they say you're gonna form a road district to take care of your roads, except the road district wouldn't be able to levy for 20 years. So, yeah, it, it's not just counties. It, it trickles down to, to smaller units of government also.
Yep. One last item, Toby, on, on, and this is an item that were the counties directly involved? And that's the, basically the interest rate they lock you into. And you're looking at a future, uh, increase. Are you locked into your original proposal? I think it was, it shows 3.60 at that time at 2020. I, is that something that you're locked into for the duration of this TIF?
So the developer received that rate at that time. A, a TIF is only worth so much because you have to look at the revenue work way back. And what I like to do with mine is you put it all in the plan so that TIF expires when that amount reaches or at 20 years. I've seen some TIFs that they'll have an interest rate of 78% associated with the original principal. And I, I highly disagree with them because it's an annuity for the developer. So by locking it in here, Mr. Shafie is only going to receive this amount regardless at today's borrowing rate at 6%. So that, that's the risk that they put on.
Yes, that is one of the few negotiable things that dealing with the county is the interest rate, is it?
Correct.
Um, and I'm, and we found that out because, uh, housing, uh, especially affordable housing levels are at different interest rates. I think you were the one that pointed it out as being that's a different
Correct.
interest rate available for the TIF. Uh, it's not that the banks make more money. It's based upon the risk factor associated with that.
There is that.
So I just wondered whether that was something because with interest rates going the other way, he's got material costs and interest rates both
Is a lot working against them.
with considerable potential for increase.
Exactly.
Okay. So I'm not wrong in assuming that, that he's looking at that.
I mean, we, we've seen
As a developer.
Commercial rates are right now five and a half to 6% depending on the credit and the risk.
Any other questions for Toby while he's up here? Toby, thank you. I appreciate you coming by.
You bet. Thanks, Sherman.
Discussion from the commission. Somebody want to make a motion? Chair is not going to.
I move we approve item number 14, tax increment, finance district number five amendment.
Is there a second? Moved in second to approve, um, the review. Is that what we're calling it? What'd you call it?
Amendment. I just went by.
Amendment, okay.
What?
What would you like? How would you like it?
Whatever it needs to be.
Amendment? Okay. Thank you. And it's been moved in second to approve, uh, tax increment district number five Liberty Plaza amendment. Is that the way it's to be worded? Is that all right with our recording? All right with our legal? Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Back to, I don't even know what that, number 16.
15.
15.
The county board report. Uh, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from their August 22nd meeting, ordinance amendment OA 22-01 to add section 321 hard rock mining. This item was heard at the September 6, 2022 board of commissioners meeting and, and was continued for further research. Uh, there is a group that's going to meet on the 22nd of this month from three to five in our office. Um, kind of some, some different sides that have some different, um, suggestions for the ordinance. So we're gonna meet, um, to discuss incorporating those into the ordinance and bringing it back in front of the board.
Okay. Any questions for Brittany on that? Thank you. Go ahead on to item number, well, items from the public, I guess. We haven't got any public left again. None. Item number 17. Go ahead.
Building permit report. Um, this month, we surpassed last year's time for this month. So we're, we're on pace. Um, and we're a little behind what we were last year, but last year was a record year. So we're still ahead for 2022, what our average was over the past five years. So.
Are you seeing some increase in the dollar amounts now that you guys have got your contractors' ordinance and some billing inspections? Are you seeing people a little more forthcoming on the dollar amount of their building project?
Uh, a little bit. We've actually collected our revenues for the year. So our budgeted revenues, we've already, and now we're over collecting right now. So.
I just knew there is a number of people in the county versus the city would wing it. The city tells you what your, your amount basically is coming to, even though contractors will question that, but the city does. And we do in a case too, but we're, um, a little more attractive. Is that a good way to put it?
Right. We do either or. So we do a contractor's bid or we have a price per square foot.
Okay.
And that price per square foot is based on the ICC, National Average, which I'm guessing next year, when it goes into effect January, is gonna increase significantly. Because I think it's only at like $155 a square foot. So next year is gonna get
Wow.
increased significantly. So.
That was where I was headed with that, whether we get an increase then next year because we automatically use this as a basis for a number.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then item B is the Western Planners Conference. Um, several of us are leaving tomorrow for Bismarck, um, for the Western Planners Conference. So it's a good opportunity to meet and greet with other planners in the region. So it's close this year. So they're not doing a South Dakota one this year and North Dakota isn't doing it. So they're doing it all in, um, Bismarck this week. So it starts tomorrow and goes through Friday. And then Planning Department, we have two new employees. I believe that you met Megan Tomage at the last meeting. Uh, she did replace Trutima. And then Christine Phillips, she replaced Madison. Um, Madison decided to just stay home. So, um, but both of them are here. Uh, in the audience, Christine has been an employee of the county, um, previously and came back to our department this time. So.
Thank you. Items from the membership.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
No items from the membership. Then you know what the next one is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn the meeting today. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.